Okay, so what you see on the screen are the eight goals that you've identified, which I would say for a small city, given the complexity of the topics you've picked, is a big lift. So I think your inclination to figure out and identify major city goals that you would like to highlight is a good one. Your city manager and I conferred a little bit about this in following the suggestion from the mayor about having three or four things. Our suggestion to you would be for you to take the blue card that you have in front of you, write down the three numbers that represent what you would pick as the top three in terms of importance. Not that the others aren't important either, a majority of you of all, in fact, I think you unanimously supported pursuing all those others, so they wouldn't fall off the radar. But this would be an effort to come up with focus and we'll see which goals have three or more of you picking them as major city goals. Is that clear? So everyone's working on the same program? Write down three things, three numbers up there. If you just put the number, that'll be easy enough. I'll do a tally and we'll figure it out. Does that work? Or any alternative suggestions if you'd like to do it a different way? I just want to be sure you're all doing the same thing.
Can we take number five and throw that into number one? Essentially, it's part of building a master plan for solving, right?
Well, there was a, what I heard in five was there was a lot about traffic calming and some other things that were beyond, you know, just a picture of a master plan, but it's the will of the council.
It seems to be related.
Well, I think David, I think he has all of these, so I think we just name the top three. All of them are going to be included.
Oh, we're giving the top three?
Yeah, just the top three.
Yeah, we're just doing the top three. But I think all of these are going to be included in what they retreat, what they talk about. We're just giving him priority on what we think our top three is, so none of it's going to be lost, is my feeling.
So just write down.
So just write down your top three.
Number two and number four are very similar.
There's my numbers.
Yeah, you're right. That's a good point. So you could literally get rid of number four because that's part of number two.
Yes.
Yeah, let's go settle this outside.
Come on, you guys.
Number one, I'm, number one is a priority for me.
Are we handing our cards in?
I already did. It wasn't that hard.
All right, so there you go.
I'm sorry, put, said number two, I went number three. I got them backwards. I became dyslexic in the last five minutes.
He doesn't believe in dog. So much for walkability.
Well, it's part of number one.
And we're not losing any of that, guys.
I think there are three basic ideas here. I think some, these other things can just kind of fold into those three ideas.
Okay, well, it looks like.
Wait, half, wait, wait.
Where a majority of council members have identified that would be six. It would be two, three, and six have a majority of you providing those as major city goals. And that would be develop fiscal policies that guide use of city resources, determine future financial needs and required revenues and other funding sources, and six being develop and evaluate capital and operational options for new water and wastewater treatment services. Those would be your major city goals. The others would be other important goals for your consideration. So that would give some guidance to staff on where you are, not that any of these, you spent a lot of work on these different topics.
Xenia's trying to slip out the door right now.
Everybody's going to now be in your department. So, would you like to offer some commentary about, you know, what you're looking at, sort of next steps here and, and what your thoughts and reflections are about what you're seeing from the council? So they get a read from you about what your takeaway is and they can give you some feedback on if that's what they would like you to have as guidance.
I think overall, this is an excellent work plan. I think the council has identified for us items that are going to help us lay the groundwork as we move through this next year and into the future together of really solidifying the cities. I mean, all of these items that you guys selected are really looking at the financial components of the city, which is something that I'm in total agreement with and really, really glad that this is what the council wants us looking at. Now, as Don mentioned and as I've heard council member Johnson mention, just because they didn't get your top three doesn't mean they're off the table. And so what we will do is, as we go in July, executive team goes and does our retreat, we're going to start the process of developing the action plans for all of these, for all eight of these goals, with all of the additional detail that you had already talked about today in taking that into account. And when we come back, what we'll do is we will look to move fastest on the top three, recognizing that if we got those three done or substantially complete in this next year, that that's really delivering for council the highest priorities for you five that you've identified here today, which also does not mean the other five we're not working on. We're definitely working on those, we're going to work on them as fast as we can, and we will have those, you know, action plans and next steps on all of those. The expectation here would be that in August is when we would next be back in front of you with the report that actually outlines what those action plans are, and we can then start to have the conversation at that point in time about, you know, what the, what the next six to eight months or nine months looks like throughout the remainder of the, of the fiscal year. So if that's something that works with council, then those would be our next steps. And some of these, particularly the master plan, seems like it's really setting the stage for looking at the prioritization of pursuit of new revenue projects, of prioritizing capital projects to support those development projects, and, and rolling ourselves into a longer-term vision, or longer-term strategy of getting into a two-year budget and implementing things on a two-year timeframe in the future. Is that something that sounds like that works for council?
Yes.
I, I think it's spelt out very clear here that everyone came to the same conclusion. It appears that the need for capital projects in the city far exceed our ability to pay for them. So with that, we have to very strongly focus on the financial positioning of the city and strategies to be able to fund these projects. Otherwise, you'll just keep kicking the can down the road. So I think that message is very clear.
Any other comments from council members on the important work that you've done on goal setting thus far? If not, we'll move on to our next topic. Okay. So we've got, there was an invitation for council members to provide suggestions for changes to other programs and services. I think you've done that in the context of the goals that you've identified. We didn't have any particular submissions that came separately from council members, but I think you embedded those in your goals. So I, I think this topic is pretty well-covered, and in fact, I imagine the staff is going to come back and say, hey, look at, in order to accomplish this ambitious set of goals, there may be some changes that they would offer to you as some options on how other things are done and where other resources are being applied in order to free things up for, to make this happen. Because just looking at all the things that you'd like to have occur, you know, it already is pretty clear that's an equation isn't going to solve with existing resources. So figuring out new and different ways of doing things or changing other priorities is going to be critical probably to figuring out how to, how to get this equation to work for the city of solving. We were going to talk some about ways in which the council can work together effectively for the community, tried to model here today some of those elements so that you could be experiencing them. I want to applaud the council for having really exercised a lot of these in what you did. So to just explain the sheet, which the council members have copies of, these, I reflected on the things that you were asking for as ways that you might be able to work better together, and then I reflected on, okay, what's worked well for other councils and what would fit for you, and tried to offer my best cut as a draft of, of ways that you could approach this. But I think your work today demonstrated a good way of providing balanced opportunities and time for all the council members. I think that worked out by and large well. I think you also demonstrated good work in listening to one another, reflecting back what you were hearing from each other, trying to find ways to clarify things and to work together effectively. I think that was good. One of, and you did a very good job of speaking to the issues, not to personalities, so that was accomplished. And in terms of finding areas of agreement, I would just observe, seeing how you work, that I think you worked very well today, and you might consider in your council meetings as well. I haven't observed that many council meetings, so I don't know, maybe you're already doing this. But it seems like it works well to hear commentary on a topic from each of the council members to kind of get a read organically of where you are, and then try to figure out, okay, what's your, what's your action item that you'd like to take away from it after you've gotten that input from, from the council members? You know, versus just jumping to a motion, and then people are either for or against the motion, and then you kind of get into this adversarial framework. I think you worked very well today. Maybe this is how you do it otherwise, but I saw that you worked very well in being able to organically get to a place where you could figure out, you know, what made sense for your city and a way to move forward by listening to each other and then articulating, okay, where are you with regard to something that you can get behind together? You know, this is an issue here of make decisions and honor the council's decision. This always comes up with councils, you know, what if you're on the, not, the council doesn't take a position that you've advocated, they take a different one? How do you deal with that? The best practices across councils are to acknowledge and recognize that and not have individual council members go around to agencies or others and advocate for their own position, but rather bring any reconsideration of items to the council, for the council to decide if it wishes to reconsider. And remaining focused on key priorities and be conscious of the trade-offs, that's really important. I've seen councils do a really good job of taking the hard work that you did today around these eight objectives and goals and actually putting them up on the wall in your council chambers, probably differentiating your top three and then the other important council goals. And, you know, when new things come up and people ask you to take on new things, is go back and take a look, how does that fit with the major goals that we've got? Is that going to be a resource constraint with our staff trying to get things done? It's a good way for you to have a conversation with the community of where things fit and what the priorities are that you're working on to accomplish on behalf of the, of the city as a whole. On providing a pathway for getting topics on the agenda, this was something that came up from several of you, of, you know, how do you do that? And how do you do it in something that's maybe at an early stage of thinking and development? And, you know, where maybe there's not enough information on the table to get a reading from three council members about whether they want to agendize something? How do you deal with that? And how do you deal with the staff resources that are needed to tee up a topic for an agenda, which takes some considerable effort? So there's a, it's kind of a bridge thought here that you might come up with a very simplified approach, a little one-pager that the council members, they want something to get some attention, you know, okay, but they can specify what is it they hope to address, why it's important, some of the key issues that they see, and if they have any potential options in mind and any needed analysis to evaluate it further, they could identify what those things are. And in that way, there would be sort of an expedited process for teeing up things that need some gestation or need some support to be evaluated further. So that was a bridge thought. Many councils just follow the basic rule of, hey, if you don't have three council members that support bringing this up as an agenda item, you just don't do it. But you've got some heavy issues that you're working on here, some new ideas that you're trying to pursue, some of which aren't fully formulated yet, and you might want to think about this sort of bridge approach to get some, you know, kind of a analysis light, if you will, from the staff to give some attention to topics that maybe are at an early stage of development. You wanted to pick up on that, David? Go right ahead.
Yeah. One thing that I would add, we'd had a conversation at a prior council meeting, maybe two or three meetings ago, about this topic, but very appropriately, how we're advancing council's agenda, how we're account, how we're advancing these goals. And so one of the things, we'll, we'll figure out a good way to do it, but one of the things that we will make a modification on is on our staff report template, we'll start to identify when something is fitting under the header of one of these goals. Whatever that topic is, we'll identify, you know, this meets council goal number two. You know, this is a financial policy advancing this goal, so that you can see when the agenda topics come up, how it is, how it is directly benefiting or advancing this, this overall goal agenda on a go-forward basis as soon as we develop those action plans and start to really work and implement towards that.
I think if you could include some kind of measure of completion, I'm not sure how, what that would look like, but for example, let's say there's five stages of completion. So here's your, here's your vision or your goal, here's the stage of completion, however you want to do that.
That's a great comment, yes. The plan right now, if it works for council, would be that once we check in with you in August, then in effect quarterly, we'll come back with an update to that report with the action plans measuring that progress. What I was getting to more was on a, you know, by week, by, by week, when we come to just the regular council meeting, if there's a topic on there that is advancing one of these goals, we'll just clearly highlight that on the staff report, and then quarterly we'll be checking in, giving you measurable progress on, on advancement.
So another item of best practices across councils is how to use some non-confrontational means to help one another bring forth the best behavior. It's challenging being up on the dais with, especially on contentious issues, a lot of pressure from the public, et cetera. You know, how do you stay in sort of best form? Actually, I have one client that uses a phrase of, you know, if you think of green is, everybody's working together well, even though they have differences of opinion, yellow is, things are starting to get a little frayed, and red is, you know, things are beginning to go off the rails. One client just uses the phrase of reminding people, let's be green, you know, let's, let's go to our, our best behavior.
Our happy place.
And that goes to another item here, which is to really focus and reinforce positive behavior. And to take some time at the end of a council meeting and reflect back, how did we do relative to the guidelines that we adopted? If you choose to adopt these or develop others in terms of the way we're working. That's a good way, positive reinforcement is the best way to change behavior. It's, basic guidelines from human research is that giving four times the positive reinforcement to critical commentary is the optimal way to get desired behavior. So if you choose to and wish to adopt these, I would suggest that you post them. That's what other councils and groups have done, is to let people know, hey, these are our standards, this is what we're trying to aspire to, and just like your goals, these are probably, or whatever you choose is how you go about working together, is probably equally important as the goals that you choose to implement. Because that's for the public, their experience of you is not only what you get done, but how you got it done and how that was observed and experienced by them as members of your community. So those are my thoughts and suggestions for you in response to the request from some council members for offering ideas and suggestions about this. And I offer them for your commentary and reactions and thoughts, and any observations you'd like to make about things that you saw in today's workshop that were supportive of these things happening. Yes?
I think that's wonderful. I think it should be posted maybe on the city website or something like that. I have a favor and a suggestion for my colleagues, is that, a little bit off the point, but a lot of residents took a lot of time to write some pretty long letters with very specific things and wants and needs for the city. And I think they're going to look at this and think of, we came out of it with more generalities. And if, if we could, could I have everybody on the council, go, not rank these in order, but go through the three pages here and pick out 10 that you think are really good ideas for everybody, and maybe we can post that as well? I think it's really important to let people know that we, that we didn't ignore what they sent us, we didn't ignore their opinions. And they're very specific opinions in this list that we received over the emails. So if we could pick maybe 10 of these or rank them in, in high, low, medium, not one through 80.
But I, I also think that a lot of, I mean, we did take all those into consideration in how this goes. Yes, it's still high-level goals, but like we discussed earlier, you know, we still need to have more extensive kind of strategy thought. And a lot of these ideas and stuff, I think, that are in here will make it into more the detailed, you know, scope of, of, you know, different strategy and, and options that we have for the city.
I agree with that. I just think that they went to a lot of time to put this together.
Right.
To give us their thoughts, and they're going to see these three macro ideas come out of it, and they're going to think that they're being ignored.
No, no, I think, I think that, I have great faith that our city manager is going to thank them effusively for their, their effort and at the same time convey the desires of the council, that these are the visions that we need to carry forward and that everything else is going to fall underneath that. So in other words, this is a public relations management issue, and I, I think that the city manager's going to do a great job of communicating it. These, these are very specific things, and they just don't have a, a place in this discussion yet, right? Maybe in the subsequent discussions, that'll make a lot more sense.
But, but I still think a lot of them were part of the discussion today, and that's what led to the high-level goals. So they're all there, but we can't simply list all these things right now and come up with a very comprehensive document that dials out every little thing that, that we're thinking.
And what you're highlighting is what I've observed in many other cities, is that oftentimes residents come with very specific things that they want.
Right.
Which are important to them because it affects their experience in the city in a very personal way. And it's always the challenge for the council to figure out, okay, what's the bigger picture and how can they provide direction that will enable.
Those things to be accomplished.
Those individual kinds of requests and so on to get accomplished. And so this kind of dynamic exists everywhere. I would, I would certainly support your idea to, you know, stick with your goals, because I think if you start having a sort of a second list of prioritizations and such, it would get confusing to people. And again, focus is going to be your friend.
Exactly. I gotta say, I'm a little miffed that you guys did not accept my recommendation for a bullet train down Copenhagen. Just saying.
So, any other comments that you have about these guidelines? Are they, are they ones that you'd like to adopt? Do they like to try them out? Do you want to develop something else of your own? I think really giving, long-term, high-performing councils are the ones that give attention not only to what they do, but how they do it together. And I would encourage you, whether you adopt these or something else, that you, that you have something that you're playing by, so that you're on the same team. I think you've demonstrated great teamwork today. I'm just looking at things that will help you and in turn help the public support you in working together effectively.
Yeah, I, I think we should make an attempt to follow these guidelines going forward.
I mean, there's certainly good things to go over right now, but I mean, again, we're not taking action at this meeting on any items, so this is just.
And you could, if you're in, if you have a appetite for it, you could, just like you're putting forward your goals.
And I think, again, we've done a great job, everyone here today, of constructively, you know, working through even some of the harder, you know, items that's sometimes hard to even bring up ideas, but, and far easier to criticize. But I think today we've done a really good job as a, you know, coming together and working constructively, and I hope that that continues, so.
So one of.
Except for De'Arnus' bullet, bullet train.
So one of the things you might consider doing, just as you're taking the goals to a subsequent council meeting, you might consider taking this, these guidelines to that, and that would give the public an opportunity to comment and you to decide at such subsequent meeting if, if these are something else that you wish to craft would be something that you'd like to carry forward. That would be a suggestion to you.
Okay.
If there's an appetite for that, then the staff could, you know, include that in their next agenda report. Any thoughts, reactions, or alternative ideas?
I, I, I think we're good. I don't, I don't really see an issue with, I don't know why we'd bring this all forward for, I don't see the purpose. I mean, it's great information, but.
We, we do have it as a, as a future agenda item to review the council protocols and things like that. I'd of course also be reluctant to just even think about these things right now when, you know, we already have a full binder that, you know, I don't know, you got it, that's no more, not just going to throw this in front of us right now today, oh yeah, that's great, I move on, you know?
Right. This is not a priority for me either.
You know, I would still want to go through our current binder and everything and review everything.
So one quick check-in on that. You know, these are guidelines, I think these were somewhat based off of Don's experience with other city councils elsewhere, as well as some of the things that are in the current council protocols. And what I just heard there, Mr. Mayor, was that it's on the agenda for future conversation about council protocols. I, I, you know, in my observation, this really was how you all worked together today. And so if that's the agreement to work forward in this manner, then maybe there is no need for any further work on this. This can just be a document that you all nod your heads or agree to, yeah, we, we want to abide by this. This is good productive city council work. And then in terms of the future agenda as a council, protocols and working on that, that's where something like that, you know, does that start to work into these goals, into this work plan? And the eight things you all just identified today as the highest priorities? And is that, you know, that, that starts to, you know, detract some staff time unless that's something that just council wants to work on individually and bring that back versus staff time being dedicated to something like that on that future agenda, where those, those three things and, and eight in total are really what I want to just shift the entire organization's primary focus on? If that, if that makes sense.
And I get, I just, it's just normally, you know, when, I feel like you're asking for direction on this particular item right now, when, you know, normally a staff report would be prepared, the council has, you know, adequate time, public has adequate time to review all these things, seven, two hours, you know, whatever. And right now, it's kind of like, it's just here, oh yeah, do you like this? Okay, move it on. That's, I'm just going to be very reluctant. Oh yeah, that's it. You know, I, I feel like I'm being, you know, something's just being pushed on me right now, and I don't like that.
This isn't a priority for me.
That's my problem.
This is a secondary issue for me.
It's great stuff. It's very informative.
Then we'll, we'll bring it back in the agenda when we bring back the goals and everything.
Sure. But I do want to set the expectation that we're going to meet again in six months and follow up with what we're doing or, you know, enhance some of these things. I don't know how we do that. How do we make sure that this happens again?
I think that's, the expectation, expectation is already set, because like you said, this is going to fall, now our city manager has, and staff has plenty of direction on some of the things that are very important to this council. They are going to do their own retreat for two days.
I meant, I meant six months from now.
Yeah.
In January.
Okay.
Is that part of the process?
There it goes again.
So deep.
Yes. As I, as I mentioned, we'll be doing quarterly check-ins with council on, on progress. We'll be identifying when items are coming to council for consideration or further direction, what those items are that are advancing these goals, as well as looking at the long-term calendar, I would recommend that in this next year, in January, we would come back, that would be. That would be the six-month check-in on the goals and the retreat, you know, council retreat, check-in on these goals, identify if, if any of them have been completed, then, you know, is there anything new then that gets advanced in that calendar? And then in one, and then in the, I would say the fall time then of next year, you would start the process of a broader strategic plan, as we would hopefully have really progressed through these, so that you can get then, into then a two-year budgeting cycle that runs on even number of years.
Okay. So a colleague of mine has a great phrase, that feedback is the breakfast of champions. So I would like you to take a moment, and I'll turn to each of you and invite you to offer, what was something you thought worked well for you today, what could be better, and any suggestion or phrase or comment about how to go forward from here. This is also a nice way to bring closure to the productive work that you've done in the session. I will, I'll suggest that we start with whichever council member would like to begin, and, and we give the honors of the close to the mayor. So if you can think of something that you thought worked well and how you went through this today, something that you think could be better, something that you'd recommend to go forward.
So I get this out of the way. I thought the more collegial way in which we were able to engage each other worked very well. And it's a shame we can't do this more frequently, but I guess that's just the nature of the process.
Any things that could be better, or any suggestions for going forward?
Yeah, we need more coffee. You can't do these things without pitchers of coffee. And how would we go forward? A bullet train. We need a bullet train.
Are you ready to chat?
All right, next.
Yeah, I thought, I thought what went well was, it seems like we're all on the same page as a council. I felt like with, with number two being, getting everyone's vote, that, you know, it's, it's refreshing to see that we're all going in the same direction. And I think it'll help also the public see that, you know, we are a very cohesive group going forward, so.
Okay. Any suggestions or recommendations for going forward?
More music, maybe. No, it was fine. It was, it served its purpose, so.
I think what worked well was the atmosphere, the, the setting and as, to use Chris's words, it was a nice, a nice format for getting together and sharing ideas. It has a lot to do too with not having an agenda, per se, like we would in a normal city council meeting, where we can just discuss issues and what's important. I think sitting around at a table at lunch in an event like this was really important for us to just share ideas, et cetera, without getting into trouble with, with certain laws and whatnot. I think what could be better, I wish that we had gotten more specific on some of our goals, like real concrete ideas. That's just my opinion. And now I want to sing kumbaya.
What, what worked really well was public input. Couldn't have had this be as successful without public input. A lot of their goals were our main goals. So I wanted to thank the public for that and for all of the council members and the mayor for showing up and staff heads for showing up to this also. I was a little bit disappointed, I've got to say this, since we're all on a good communication level right now, that the last slide that we just looked at regarding council protocol was met with such negativity, because one of the reasons that we're here for a council retreat is to discuss communication. And I thought that those suggestions were, were really very valuable. And that's why I just made my suggestion that we could work better if we were to follow some of those ideas going forward.
No, I mean, just to resound everything you guys just said, a very positive session. I'm very happy with how everyone has all worked together. I think, I mean, obviously what worked well is, is just being able to have this session where you can almost cover any topic under the sun and generally, you know, get a, some idea of where this, this council is with regard to the priorities for the city. What could be better and how to go forward? Again, I'd just like to kind of resound that, you know, having a more, eventually developing a more strategic type document that would really outlay some of the more specific goals or potential policy strategies that could be implemented. If we created something like that, I think it would, it would also facilitate a lot of further ideas and ways that we can get things done. It also enables council members to do a little more research ahead of the time, you know? So if there's a topic that they're not as familiar on, everyone here has, you know, different skill sets, different items where they're, they're going to be, you know, less informed on or more informed on. So having something like that allows both the council as well as the public to understand the topics, what's driving them, why it's important for the city, and, and generally where we're looking to, to go forward to create a sustainable community, so.
And just before I turn it to your city manager, who was instrumental in organizing the session for you, I would just say I'm very thankful to all of you for the way you engaged in the interviews that we had and the preparation session on June 10th and your preparation for today and then your work with one another. It was a delight to work with you and to see your capacity to work through a lot of issues and come up with your priorities and find a way to do that together. It speaks well for the future of your community and the opportunities for you to actually achieve these goals and have a well-knit community through that process. I wish you well with all those efforts.
Am I speaking to what worked well?
You can, you can speak to just your, your experience and what you're taking away and what's closing.
Yeah, well, I, I think this setting worked very well. I appreciated council working hard this week to provide, you know, pre-provide some of your goals and the things that are important to you, and then the way you all coalesced around eight topics, three specific that are really the highest priority. That's really going to help us to know what the council's desiring from a work product from staff and start moving that agenda forward so that you are accomplishing the things with the city that you want to get accomplished here with the city. So I really appreciated that. And I think what could work better moving forward would be really getting this to be more of a routine process and starting earlier in the year, which just because of, you know, new city manager coming on board, we missed out on a big timing window when normally this would have happened with a new council. And so I think moving forward, we're going to ensure much better that we're hitting timeframes that provide, provide the opportunity for council to, to, you know, work through these things as we're going into budget season and make sure that you're allocating the resources to the priorities that you see moving forward.
Back to you, Mr. Mayor, for anything else before we close?
No, I mean, I just, I would highly agree. I just like to point out, kind of dovetail what you're saying. So there's, there's a lot of things, a lot of challenges this council's had to face, you know, since day one. You have, you know, city manager retiring, we have interim city manager, recruitment for new city manager, you know, and then again, all these things get delayed. Now we're, you know, six-plus months, you know, out and it kind of creates this feeling like, you know, frustration with the council or the community and things like that, that, you know, things aren't getting done. But I think this is just a necessary step to start really grabbing by the reins and moving forward, so. Happy to get to work.
Thank you.
Thank you, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Clapping for this?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.